Welcome, welcome to all of you. Let's start with our invocation and we'll ask Mr. Palmer of the Patrick Persuasion to lead us, please.
Father God, you've heard this voice before and I hope that you understand it. Understand the plea that comes. Father, the people in this room, the people who call themselves Lions across the nation are an exceptional breed and I'm so thankful to be in their family and in the family of your worship. Fathers, these days come before us, I'd like you to have us give us that real feeling of thoughtful giving, of true service, and most of all, that wonderful feeling inside of each one of us when we are successful at doing that. Father, keep us as healthy as you need us to be, welcome us into your home when you need us there, and truly understand that we're thankful to you. Amen.
Amen.
Inspiration.
Well, let's see, who do I have here? Oh, Isla Huester, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Yeah, I can do that.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the Pride of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And the singing of our anthem, Marilyn Patterson, please.
I'm going to lead us in "God Bless America" in honor of David Smith.
Okay. "God bless America, land that I love, stand beside her and guide her through the night with the light from above, from the mountains to the prairies, to the oceans, light with all. God bless America, my home, sweet home. God bless America, my home, sweet home." Very nice one. See, you really can sing when you want to. Lion Tamers back there, do we have guests? I think we do. Let me give you just a second for the dust to settle a little back there.
Yes, fellow lions and guests, we have about 12 guests in the house. So Isla, Greg, and John Claypool would like to introduce also Eric. Center and crew, yep.
Kirk brought his son, and I'm not going to try to destroy his last name, but his name is Sam.
Hey, Sam, welcome.
And I have Josh Huff as a guest. And David Breeze, where are you?
Breeze, yeah.
Okay, and the next person, oh, Josh has a guest already, pretty good for a newcomer. His name is, I don't know. Oh, Jordan Bosworth, sorry.
Okay, welcome, Jordan.
And let's see, I'm going to John Claypool, who has his nephew.
Yeah, Sheriff, yeah.
Fellow lion and guest, I want to introduce my nephew, who lives up from Riverside, California, and his oldest daughter is going to be attending Berkeley later this month. His younger daughter is starting high school today, Annabelle and Julia. And most of you know my sister, Chris. She ran rods and gunners, and unbeknownst to both of the owners. And anyway, David Lindwall.
Welcome, David, glad to have you.
Okay, I'll go to Eric.
President, Sheriff, fellow lions and guests, David Hammond, and I have his application with me.
All right, welcome, David.
Eric, you have a guest.
President, Sheriff, fellow lions and guests, my guest is raining, agreary, agary, I'm so bad at that, and thanks for having me.
All right, welcome. Welcome, was it raining?
And center, our better half, Lauren and Aster.
President, Sheriff, fellow lions and guests, I have Aster here, he's been here a couple times, he's raising his hand. He may come up to you guys and ask you for his food, don't give it to him, I don't want to have to clean him up after.
Maybe some spaghetti is great.
I know, he loves spaghetti. And then Lauren is here as well, thank you.
Welcome. Greg, first, you have one, two, three, four, five.
Hi. President, Sheriff, fellow lions and guests, hello there. My guest today, first one is Jay Pruitt, as of today, is a brand-new member.
Woo!
And coming in very shortly is Sister Carol Studd and her son, Ken Martine.
Is there anyone else? John, handwriting, we have a doctor in the house, I can't read the handwriting.
You are, he was already introduced.
He was already introduced.
I know that, but there's a weird name on here.
Oh.
Okay.
Is it Isla Huester?
You're going to hell and you don't have any friends with you.
That's harsh.
Dennis, how long is your presentation?
It's after lunch, so I know it can't be very long.
We'll cut it off short, we'll cut it short. Happy dollars, sad dollars, we're up front.
I got some.
Happy dollars or any other kind.
With happy man fur.
Yeah.
Great. President, Sheriff, fellow lions and guests, real happy dollar, last Friday, went with Mike Barker down to Fort Vancouver to meet, they're a comedian in a brand-new place, Golden Corral, if you've never eaten there, I eat too much, but anyway, a really good meeting to have some of those old friends.
Oh, oh, I took the old bit, I, no, why did I not expect that?
Walter? A word from Walter.
Walter, hi Walter.
Walter the Lion. I can't follow that. But the lion, fellow lions and guests, here's a happy five, Ray and I both made it today for a change. Pass, District Governor Mike.
Thank you.
President, Sheriff, fellow lions and guests, I've got a, I can't believe it, dollar. Greg was right, he went with me down to Fort Vancouver last week at the Golden Corral, and I, he had never been to one, and I told him how good it was, because I've been in that one and a couple others, and after the meeting, he agreed how good it was, and the reason is that I can't believe it, dollar, I've known him for 50 years, and that's the first time he's ever agreed with me.
I'm proud to be an advocate.
Okay, Lion Duane.
President, Sheriff, fellow lions and guests, I have a sad dollar, my back hurts and my leg hurts, and it's called, what do you call it?
Old age.
Old age.
It's not for wimps.
Finally, President, Sheriff, fellow lions and guests, happy dollar because I was able to cross Home Projects list off my list on Saturday, I laid flooring for the first time in my life, it was a lot of fun.
All right.
Flash Spencer.
Your definition of fun is weird.
Yeah, there you go.
President, Sheriff, fellow lions and guests, first thing, if you think Eric's definition of fun is weird, what was fun to me is Terry Taylor Garage Sales, I got a file cabinet for $10 this weekend, had to call the neighbor and he ended upstairs with me though, but that's the first happy dollar. Second happy dollar, if anyone is interested in going to or being in the Longview Centennial Parade, September 9th, at 1:00 PM, followed by the Time Capsule Placement at Longview City Hall to be opened in another 100 years, 2123, I just put out a map with where you can park, the parade route and all that, out online today. Thanks.
Nice. Maybe we need a Yellow Jacket parade.
President, Sheriff, fellow lions and guests, first happy dollar, Taylor Garage Sale, because there was, what did I do?
Feral, you called us feral lions.
Yeah.
I think that's pretty accurate some days.
But I always liked it, something you cats are.
Yes.
Feral, I've neutered.
Oh, yeah. Oh!
That means, that means, do you realize, he means as I like to neuter feral cats,
so, wait, go.
What happens when you work there?
The second one is, after that, I saw Bill Pontius in his new Go Mobile, it's got four wheels, goes up to like 25 miles an hour, and I said, you can come to club now, can't you?
Yeah.
So hopefully will. And my final happy dollar is because of what's happened in the world, Washington State University has a 25% chance of winning the championship.
Lion Free David?
President, Sheriff, fellow lions and guests, this is a sad dollar because, because my mom's car just went in the shop today, again, and this time, it didn't start right, but we're going to fix that, and hopefully, we're going to be going to camp Thursday.
All right.
Hold it, stay just, relax, just relax. Fine, Gail.
President, Sheriff, fellow lions and guests, my sister is coming into town on Thursday and staying the weekend, so good to see her.
Nice.
Now, now George. Fine, George. Go ahead, George.
President, Sheriff, fellow lions and guests, a couple happy bucks, one is, I just played golf with Lion Doug Erwin, he's not here today, but I know Doug doesn't like to wear a string, he's on the golf course, wore that, but when he got there, he said, they just had recent cataract surgery, his glasses didn't work, received help, took them off in front of his pocket, put it all around him, it was actually pretty cool, it's kind of like a, a vision playing golf with Ellen Keller. There's been a number of comments about mature lion, I remember I saw this quote, I know Mark is our quote masher, but I wanted to share this, it's from antiquity, it's, so it's masked on, but it's quite an open, beautiful poem. It's not the gray in a man's hair that says he's getting old, or the vacant look in his eye, for sure I'm told, but when a lion makes a contract, when a lion makes a contract to buy the cancer pill, then you're over the hill, but you're over the hill.
Well said, sir, well said. Fine, Jerry.
Oh, thank you. Team Lion, Sheriff, fellow lions and guests, happy dollar, my daughter Jennifer is flying in today, tonight, and she and my wife Bonnie are going to the String of Dreams, which is an annual event they have gone to forever, now that, now that she lives, I don't, it's going to be a little bit different, but anyway, she's only going to stay the one night, and she, then she'll catch a plane back home. Nice to see you.
Great. Pass, District Governor North.
Girls got priorities.
President, Sheriff, fellow lions and guests, there's my $5, I'm sure the fact will link it over here. The first part of that is, I'm very happy, I had Ellen home after eight days watching grandkids, and I was, she was only a different part of Longview, but I was the shuttle and chauffeur person for every great kid, including football camp this weekend, and on Sunday's football camp, our grandson and step-grandson, for their respective age groups, were named the camper of the day, so I was happy about that. Have a reminder on Facebook, four years ago last week is when I received a call from a gentleman named Bert Hanson, some of you may know, have heard that story before, but he is my biological father, and that was his confirmation against DNA results back, so it was nice to do that, good memory. Sad, another memory on Facebook, 14 years ago last week, Joe Boyle, lion at this club, passed away, I think, some of you, I remember from that, I mean, just a regular lion, really carried, but he's an actor for a long time. Finally, one of the week, Mahapiya Mahatma Gandhi, hard to say. It is unwise to be too sure of one's own wisdom, it is healthy to be reminded that the strongest might weaken and the wisest might err.
Right.
Look out below. Pass, District Governor North, and the apple of my eye, Marilyn.
President, Sheriff, fellow lions and guests, I have two happy dollars, one of them was last week, there's one, celebrated our daughter Stephanie's 51st birthday, I'm sure she wants that advertised. And continuing the celebration on Sunday, brothers came and son came to celebrate Stephanie. We have 14 people, nine adults, and five young people, and what did we do? We went for pizza at Pia, Paettros, and played miniature ball, and it's sort of like a fish story, would you believe that 12 of us each got a hole in one?
They need to re-slang the table.
Let's wrap her up here with, one and three. President, Sheriff, fellow lions and guests, can I have a bite back, please? Five happy bucks, first of all, unlike Eric, I didn't lay the floor, but I laid on the floor this weekend, what happens when you're 60s and there's something on the floor that you really want, but you didn't realize how long you were going to get to stay, right, Ken? Yeah, it's, it's, it was fun. Unlike my brother Hal, I'm not going to call you cat names, I actually kind of like you, so I'm going to call you bovine buddies, how about that? There you go. Third happy buck, lion Sam ended up calling up to, my lion Sam, the cursed lion Sam, even though they're close to the same age, lion Sam went up to Seattle for a friend's wedding, so yesterday, stopped in, we were just chatting, I was like, hey, so how was the wedding? He was like, oh, it was kind of weird. I was like, oh, so, who was it again? He says, Kid Sam. I was like, oh, great, absolutely great, and so, knowing the history of this child, I went, oh, so, how far along is she? And he goes, what? And I said, wow, you got married and she's not breaking? And then he says, oh, no, she doesn't, she doesn't look like it. And I'm like, ah, that's youthful generation, maybe they do have a, have some, something that's going to be awesome about it.
Not, not that, not going to happen, that's, okay, good to know, good to know. That, that thought process. Fourth happy buck, I found the thing that I've been looking for, for one of my little boats, and I found it last night, and it's absolutely just in Castle Rock, it's a 19duane, a 1955 Johnson 5.5 horse, outboard motor, original graphics, everything's there, guy says it runs, I'll pick it up tomorrow, I am even more excited for a boat hooker, that's like one of the big tensions. And the fifth happy buck is that I think that the Pattersons have not given us a separate tank update in months, and I'm sure it does now, especially after nine people were there.
No comment. All is secret, all is well. Jenny, did you have anything?
Yeah.
Okay, Anthony.
President, Sheriff, fellow lions and guests, I'm going to start off with a sad news first, and then after that, it's all happy news. I had a cousin get together, and when my sister flew up from Scottsdale, she got a call that her son, he has a boat, evidently it was elevated, and he fell out of it onto a picnic table, fractured three vertebrae, and he's in a trauma center now in Scottsdale, so prayers for him, please. Now on for the happy stuff. Also, he's able to walk, so he is walking, so that's part of the happy dollars. My sister flew into town for our cousins' get-together, but my cousin Randy asked me to get it together, we had too much fun, I'm just going to say, it was just, it was, it was fun, and then we had dinner at the casino with several of us, another great meal, and then yesterday, I had lunch with Ann and Anna, and we talked about a lot of stuff. I thought the lunch would go for maybe an hour, no, we're chatty Cathy's, it went for an hour and a half, and then Anna and I went back to our house, and we canned some green beans, so it was all kind of happy stuff, except for my nephew Eric.
I think we're done.
Okay. All right, and now, not, neither a happy dollar or a sad dollar, but if, if it was, it would be a very sad dollar indeed. For those who haven't heard, our brother lion, Jim Woodworth, who has been, who was a Longview pioneer since 2018, died in a motorcycle accident Wednesday morning, August 2nd. So if you know the family or anyone in the family, if you're able, reach out to them to express condolences if possible, if not, there is a card that Lion Ann will, will tell us about a little bit later, make sure you sign that. I guess, Kirk, you're up.
Thanks.
Thank you, President, Sheriff. Okay, today's speaker is our Kellis County Commissioner, he's a native of Longview, having been born and raised on the old west side, he attended school here. He has a relationship with our club, as a senior at RA Long, he attended a week-long session of Presidential Classrooms of Young Americans, and participated in a YMCA Youth Legislature Program, both of which were supported by grants from the Longview Pioneer Lions. And I guess this is, this is return on our investment that he graciously comes and presents to our club on several occasions, so. He attended the University of Washington and returned to Longview to teach, he taught for 25 years, 35 years, 35, yeah, I got that wrong. He was elected to Longview City Council three different times, including serving as the Mayor of City of Longview, he's been elected Kellis County Commissioner since 2012, he is currently serving his third term, he served as Treasurer for the Regional Fish Recovery Board, he served on the CAP Board, and oversees the museum and Health and Human Services, he has prepared revisions to our census blocks, led redistricting efforts, and does just many things as our Commissioner. He's here to give us an update on many interesting issues that are facing the county at this particular time. He is married to Chris and has three daughters, all of whom graduated from RA Long, and undergraduate master's degrees, and would you give a warm welcome to Dennis Webber?
You can use the box, Dennis, or if I can kick it away, whatever works for you.
Oh, you can.
Stand tall, Dennis.
Kick it away, I'll stand.
There you go, all right. Otherwise, I get lost in the flag.
It is always great to be here, I do feel a connection with Arnie, he was the one who kept trying to talk me into joining the club way back in the good old days.
He failed.
And he failed, but, but there was also another very strong connection that I have with, with your club indirectly, there's a member of your club that I can't seem to avoid. When I was talked, when I was first running for Longview City Council in 1979, believe it or not, one of your members was on my campaign committee and coined a, a campaign theme based on the fact that I was not even 28 years old yet, and I was running for city council, and he said, well, your campaign theme ought to be a part of Longview for 27 years. And he was on the council, and I enjoyed serving with him, and decided, if I had an opportunity, I would follow in his footsteps, and I became mayor pro tem, and a few years later, I became mayor when he stepped down. So I followed George in, in that role as, as mayor, and have always been indebted to him. Few years later, he served a single term in the State House of Representatives and decided that was two years too many, I think, and stepped down, and I thought, well, gee, I followed him as mayor, maybe I could follow him into the state legislature, and I, so I ran to succeed him, and one of, number of races that I lost, I didn't make that job, but that was, that was okay, we, we, a year later, I stepped down from the city council after 12 years, that's time enough for anybody to be in office, it's time to get out and let somebody else have a crack at it. That was good for about 10 years, and then I was persuaded to, to come back in and serve as, serve on the city council again, and I did get re-elected to another three terms, which was, which was wonderful, had a great opportunity to work with, I think about half of this club has served on the Longview City Council at one time or another. But in the year 2012, Mr. Rader set the path for me once more, he decided to retire after 12 years as our county commissioner, and I will always remember the day after his announcement, he announced on a Wednesday, Thursday was our city council meeting, and as I was leaving City Hall, my council members surrounded me and said, Dennis, you need to run to succeed George. And I was honored, I mean, they were, they were pretty unanimous, it was time for me to get out. Get kicked out, but that, that was, that was a, a nice opportunity, and it's been neat. So my last real connection with George is that I do anticipate at the end of next year, after my 12 years, I will get to follow him into retirement, so, thank you, George, for, for being, for being a role model.
Stay out of the hospital.
Well, we'll try.
Or spend half of your retirement in the hospital.
We will, we will try to do that. I'm also remembered, again, as you were introducing and talking about happy bucks and, and how important family is, not only the nuclear family with your kids, grandkids, nieces and nephews, but the family of members in this, in this nieces and nephews, but the family of members in this, in this very strong clan of lions, whether they're feral or not, I don't know. That was kind of confusing. For those of you who know, my wife, Chris, and I did raise three daughters. And Spencer, you will want to raise your kid to be independent and happy and pursue whatever his dreams take him. Just to be aware, sometimes those dreams take your kids a long ways away. I have, my closest grandchildren live in Ontario, Canada, my youngest daughter Juliana, two of the most beautiful granddaughters you can imagine. I have another daughter who lives in Nairobi, Kenya, working for World Vision and does wonderful work there. And my oldest daughter and her family live in Sri Lanka. They're, they've got the most handsome two grandsons you can ever imagine. And I've got pictures I can show you. However, I'm not here really to talk about myself or even George Rader, even though I have. I'm here to share with you a little bit about what we're doing in Callis County. So if you want to move to the next slide, if you can do that, pal?
He knows what I can do.
Yes, always, always amazing. One of the important functions that county government provides are our elections. Elections are so important. And I wanted to assure you that the elections process in Callis County are outstanding and they're very transparent. Not that the secret ballot is violated, but that the process is very, very open. It has a lot of paperwork and there are some volunteers that come in and work opening ballots, but every single ballot comes to the county inside an envelope and you sign the outside. That signature is absolutely important because they match that signature with the signature they have on file at the county when you registered to vote. Now, the challenge is, is that we all tend to change our signatures over the years. So the county staff is actually trained with, by the folks that train the State Patrol on signature verification. What do you look for? What is the acceptable variations that are still okay? And what are the tells that it's not the right, the same person? Because if there is a question at all, that ballot is called challenged and it's set aside. It's not opened, it's just that envelope. The other, the other thing that the staff look for is to make sure it was received on time. So those who sent their ballots in by mail take the risk that the post office will take a while. And if it arrives at the elections office after the deadline, that vote does not count, even if you mailed it early enough. So always use the ballot box. Those are picked up every day on time. But it's all, it's all a challenge. Now, those challenged ballots, if it's a signature issue, the person whose signature has been questioned gets notified and said, please give us another version of your signature. We, you know, we want to make sure that you actually cast this ballot. And the interesting thing is, is that sometimes they have discovered that spouses will vote for, for their husband or wife. And that's not allowed under the rules. That's, that is a no-no. And sometimes it is not the same signature. Here's one of the, here's, here's a very real world problem with voting and signatures. Guess what they're no longer teaching in school? Handwriting, right? So we are getting some scratches and squiggly lines, but people, almost always younger, younger voters who don't really have a signature. They don't know how to answer. And that's, that will continue to be, but we have their little scratched squiggly line on the registration card, so it's gotta match that squiggle. Otherwise they get a chance, but they do get a chance to cure it. So I mean, that, that part of it is good. We don't always remember how we signed when we registered to vote. So it is above board. The opening of the ballots is recorded on television, people can watch on television so that the process is very true. At the end of the day, those ballots that aren't cured with a new, more valid signature are presented to the canvassing board, an official sounding name, and we go, and it consists of three elected officials, the chairman of the board, the county auditor, and prosecuting attorney, or representatives from their offices. And they go through exactly the same thing. Did the dates match? Did the signatures match? Is it close enough? And they're, they're the final authorities. And if, once the challenged ballots are okayed, if they are, then the envelopes opened, ballots unfolded, they run through the scanner, and the votes are added. So it is definitely a clear, open, transparent process. Carolyn Funnings-Lent, who is pictured right there with her back to you, runs a pretty good ship and she prides herself on making sure anybody who wants to come in and observe can. She has open houses, I would encourage you to go. You walk away feeling really good. Elections in Callis County are very, very excellent. So this picture actually shows our, four of our, five of our local state legislator. You might remember, you might recognize Jim Walsh, he probably doesn't like that particular profile of him. You'll notice Jeff, in the tan overcoat is John Braun, state senator, and Joel McIntyre, state representative, Jeff Wilson, state senator, and Peter Abnarle, state representative. Abraun and Abnarle are stationed in Lewis County, represent the eastern half of our county. All right. So some of the other issues facing us, some exciting trends, if you go on to the next one. We are in process of doing a wonderful thing with our landfill. You know, landfills is mostly comprised of decaying garbage and that does produce stink. It also produces methane gas. The stink, we can't do a whole lot about, we try to control the factors that create the smells. The methane, we actually have to collect. There's an entire pipe system that goes all throughout the landfill, collecting the methane, and it's disposed of. Right now, it's disposed of in two smokestacks by burning them, 1,700 degree Fahrenheit to burn off the methane. Now, I've thought for an awful long time, that is a waste, that's a waste of resources. And in fact, the state of Washington has agreed and they said, if you can't utilize that methane, we're not going to allow you to collect the materials that create the methane. So we are in negotiations with PUD to convert that methane into electricity. There's, there are processes that they can use. It'll, it'll take a bit of an investment, several million dollar investment for the machinery to do that. But we have to have enough garbage to create enough methane to make it pencil out. And so we are in the process of doing exactly that, all at the same time of making sure that our rates remain among the lowest rates for garbage collection in the entire state. Folks up in Puget Sound have incredibly expensive rates because they have to haul all their garbage to eastern Washington. About $100 per ton is paid just for transportation costs. So there are some counties that are, that have discovered us. And for a cut in their rates, we can get an increase in our revenue charging them market rates, keeping our rates lower for our businesses and employers and our residents. And we're just excited with this potential with the Callis PUD to be a little bit more ecologically responsible. So, next one. One of the big issues is affordable housing. We know the rents are high enough to be house payments and there aren't enough of them. Vacancy rates are extremely low and that has been a challenge. So one of the things that the state legislature has done for us, for you, for anybody who transfers deed documents, they have charged a document recording fee. It has gone up to $300 now every time a deed is recorded, a document is recorded in the auditor's office. And that money is to go to address homelessness and affordable housing. And we have, the three of us on the Board of Commissioners have agreed to spend most of the money that we've received on projects that are addressing affordable housing, three in particular. The good members of the Longview Presbyterian Church had some acreage behind the church that they have donated to Longview Housing Authority to build an affordable housing unit, about 40 units. It's called Sunrise Village and we gave about $1,000, we gave about $750,000 to them for that. Campus Towers, longtime low-income housing project for seniors off of 20th Avenue, is in the process of building in addition. If you drive out Olympia Way, you probably have recognized the construction that's going on. And we gave about the same amount of money for that project. And then most recently, we've given just shy of $700,000 to Kelso's Catlin and Main. Again, it's a two-building, multipurpose facility for low-income housing, as well as the public library, as well as a community center. And some of that is very, very controversial, but Kelso is working through those issues. So we're glad to be able to address in some way. But as I was talking, as I was mentioning this morning in our Commissioner meeting, something else has been happening far above the ability of government to actually be the answer. Something's happened in the local market that has encouraged contractors, builders, to go crazy here in Callis County. Everywhere you look, if you drive up from Portland on I-5, you see Calama, it's just exploding. There are a whole bunch of proposals to fill in a big chunk of woodland bottoms with new housing. We have, you go towards Castle Rock, they're, they're going full tilt at a new development called Callis Landing, a multiple family, a single family, as well as commercial districts and recreational opportunities. Even all the way out in Silver Lake, off of Silver Lake on Hall Road, there's a multi-phase subdivision going in. But if you really want to see the growth, travel out Ocean Beach Highway and you'll see new apartment complexes for sure. And especially as you get out at the old Robbins addition near Baker's Corner, whole, a huge new apartment complex off of Finch Drive. In fact, it's right across the slough from the Dyking District Headquarters. And again, incredible growth and development. And then if you really want to be impressed, take a stroll through Lexington. Right next door to the Seventh Day Adventist Church, there's this enormous complex, about 300 townhouses going in. In fact, the principal of the new Lexington School that was built with lots of capacity expects 100 students beginning in September to start attending that school, probably filling them up. And that's not all. There's another 80-home development just south of Timwah, including a single family, 80 single families, but also about 80 apartments going in north Lexington. So all over the county, homes are being built. I have faith that the market will make some adjustments. Some of the older housing stocks are gonna have to moderate their rents, I think, because of competition that they haven't had, it's been so long since we've had a lot of apartments being built. I'm hopeful that we'll, we'll see some relief on the affordable housing issue. That said, the new bridge into Lexington that connects Lexington with I-5 is a double-edged sword because that also makes Lexington accessible to the folks in Clark County and we become their bedroom community. There are pluses and minuses to that. So some great times. I'm excited about the growth potentially in Callis County. Okay, next activity that I've been involved in is serving on the Lower Columbia Fish Recovery Board. And I will confess that it's totally selfish. I like to eat salmon and as it's being, as it's getting harder and harder to get, we need to be doing extra work. Now, it is because of treaties that were negotiated by Isaac I. Stevens back in the 1850s that we have contract language that requires us to protect the fish stock for Native Americans. That hasn't always been the case, it's only been since 1960, 1976 that the Supreme Court said Judge Bolt was correct in interpreting the original language. In common means 50/50. And we're a long ways away from getting that, but there are a lot of different strategies and techniques. You know, when I was a kid learning about salmon, I was told that they had this mysterious instinct that would always get them back to their original spawning ground. And what we've learned since then is that's not really true. They do, they're always looking, they're trying to find that place. And we know that's not true because dams that have been removed, that have been in place for 100 years, the recovery has only taken one season and the salmon have discovered it, it's a new place to spawn. And that's good. I'm not calling on massive dam removal because it's always a cost benefit analysis, but there are some dams that can be removed because they don't produce enough electricity to make it worthwhile. Slash dams were one of the ways. The old loggers, 125 years ago, used to get logs from the hills down to the rivers because we didn't have the logging trucks and the roads and even railroads. They would build dams and then they would fill the reservoir behind that dam with logs and then break open the dams and splash the logs down. Imagine the tremendous economic, environmental cost as those valleys were stripped clean of all vegetation down to the bedrock. Well, it turns out in August and September, when the fish are trying to get their way back to the salmon, to spawning grounds, traveling over heated water over those, that bedrock is just not healthy. So we have to figure out ways to slow the water down to make it easier for the fish to get by that. And that's where we have engineered log jams, things that we usually try to get out of stream beds, we're now trying to put back in to roughen up the passageways to slow the rivers down. The old corrugated culverts that we put in for logging roads and other roads, the fish don't, don't pass through them. And now we have to take those out. We had a culvert that blew, literally blew out about a year and a half ago on Tower Road, wiped out a huge section of Tower Road, which we're gonna show a picture of. And instead of replacing the culvert, we're having to rebuild a bridge and restore a very short creek. Lots of different strategies that we're working on. About 300 projects just between Bonneville Dam and Chinook on the Lower Columbia, including the Callis Valley watershed. So great, great progress is being made, it's not coming along as fast as we want, but we're gradually making, we're making a heck of a lot more progress than they are in Puget Sound. The development in Puget Sound is so thick, you know, they're just simply not going to restore salmon-bearing streams in downtown Seattle. But that's where all the voters are. And so most of the money gets spent on projects in Puget Sound. So I'm happy that we're able to make the progress we are making in southwest Washington and we're seeing some positive signs of increasing returns. Probably the most important role that we have for Callis County is maintaining the roads and bridges. After all, the network of roads and bridges gets the raw materials to the mills, the logs to the saws and to the paper plants. And we have great expectations that roads are done well. In fact, the first time I ran for office, I noticed something that, that you could always tell where the city limits were because the quality of the roads changed. The county roads were really good and it wasn't quite as good with the cities. Although, as a Longview City Council veteran, Longview does parks pretty well. And it's been a struggle for counties to do, to do great parks. But our roads and bridges have a great reputation. We constantly get awards for the engineering work in and all that. So some of the interesting changes that you may have, you'll see off to the left, or off to the right-hand side, what is literally referred to as the half bridge. It's on Rocky Point and it is just a half a bridge. And if you, for those of you that are up close, you'll see 1919, we're still using that road. Well, not anymore, we're, we've, we've taken that bridge out, made historic notifications and you can look it up, and we're, we're modernizing it. This actually goes over the main line. So construction has been interesting because the railroads won't allow us to build, to work over that tunnel during certain high-traffic months for the railroads. The bottom picture is the, is what Tower Road looked like at Rock Creek, and that was the one that I mentioned, is not being replaced with culverts but with a full-blown bridge. We bought a temporary bridge to get the traffic going as soon as possible. We bought a temporary bridge to get the traffic going as soon as possible. And now they're working on the full, regular bridge. And the state has given us some money to rehabilitate that creek for salmon-bearing purposes. All right. Next one. Surprisingly, Mount St. Helens eruption still affects our lives every day. You'll see a big pile of silt caught up on the piers of the new bridge over to Kelso. I believe that that is the plug of all that sediment from that Tootle Tower Road.
Washout.
Yeah, the washout. And it's clogged up. But a year ago, it was up at Tootle Park. So it's making its way down. But if it's not that one, it's going to be the other one. We'll be getting a bunch of silt from the washout up at the monument. It just, it all comes downhill eventually. And so we have to make sure that the Corps is constantly monitoring between the dykes, down in the lower communities where most people live in Callas County, to make sure that when it reaches a certain point, they get the dredges in and dredge it out. That's the most expensive option from the Corps' point of view. And so there is a collaborative that's been formed to try to address the issues up. The more silt we can keep up above, the less of a problem down below it's going to be. We also continue to struggle with the fact that we haven't fully economically recovered. How do you recover from something where you've got a national monument now, you'll never be able to harvest that timber? How do you replace the jobs? And so one of the strategies of the collaborative is to address that. And of course, we've got the problems with salmon and other endangered species. We have to be able to address all those things. So this collaborative was formed, and it, believe it or not, consists of two tribes, five federal agencies, three state agencies, Callas County, three cities, Dyking District, the PUD, Port of Longview, and I think I missed two or three other agencies. And we're all supposed to be working together. And in fact, we all signed an agreement that we will work together. And it's been interesting to watch the interplay back and forth. We are, we're kind of being facilitated by an agency called the Williams Ruckles House Foundation. That costs money, and so it's been interesting to raise money for a collaborative effort. But it's one of those things that has to be done for the safety of our communities, for the future, and for the environment. Last thing I want to share with you is something that's been in the news just recently. At the end of this year, we have a 1/10th of a percent sales tax due to expire. And this is a sales tax that was authorized by the state legislature back, I believe it was in the year 2012. In December of 2012, just a month before I joined the commission, the previous county commission approved this tax increase, 1/10th of a cent on dollars of sales, for behavioral health issues. Behavioral health, that's drug addiction, as well as mental health issues. And we've been collecting those dollars ever since, roughly was about a million. And of course, it's a sales tax. That always reflects inflation. So that's steadily increased. It's now collecting about a million five a year. And originally, an advisory committee said one-third should go to people who don't have health insurance, so that they can get mental health treatment or addiction services. A one-third should go to the drug court for those who are charged with a crime, a felony crime, and face prison. The promise is your jail term is diverted, suspended, if you pass the treatment for drug court. And then the other third was a series of programs for prevention and education about the problems with addiction and mental health issues. Well, on the right side of the chart, you'll see that those percentages have changed. The first big surprise was with Obamacare, everybody had access to healthcare. So that, we had extra money to spend. What we didn't realize was how serious the problem was in our jails. In fact, it didn't take very long for me, meeting with other commissioners around the state, to realize that everyone was facing the fact that our jails were turning into an unlicensed mental health facility. The issue, the issues were so serious, they continue to be serious. One of the commissioners who came to office and was given a tour of the jail came back with an interesting story. And I'm glad we're done eating because it was pretty awkward. But he was there at a time somebody was in jail, having a mental health breakdown and smearing human waste on the wall itself. I mean, that should not be what jails are made for. And so we now have a majority of the money, about 43, yeah, 43% is going to the jails to support programs and try to keep people from having those kinds of collapses. Not only mental health counselors, but also some treatments, medically assisted treatment for those that know they're hooked, they're on a treatment. But once they go into jail, they may lose their Medicaid coverage and the treatment stops and then they go into withdrawal, causing problems. So we have those kinds of problems. The money is well-spent for those things. About a third, a little over a third, does go to drug court. And we continue to see increasing numbers of folks. Once the pandemic settled down and some other legal issues, we saw a drop in the number of people even charged with drug crimes. Those numbers are back up, more people in jail. We're figuring out how to cope with the new challenges. The youth center, we used to call that the JUBY. And again, mental health counselors for kids that come in, really with some very serious mental health problems. And then, just brand new this year, we hired four mental health professionals to be able to respond with the sheriff when they're out on a call, if somebody's having a mental health crisis. Our law enforcement personnel aren't trained to deal with mental health folks. So we have this crew that can come in and de-escalate and help those folks out. So, neat changes, a lot of stuff going on with Callas County. And I know we've got a few minutes left for questions. I think, Pat, you were trying to get my attention early. I did see you.
Hey, so the state says we have to do something about the rez, and the state says we can't do anything with rez. What do you think? Don't say that. We don't have anything to rez.
Yeah, you know, it's like, elections have consequences. Boy, haven't I discovered that this year, but that's a whole different issue. The way out of that is you ship, the garbage has to go to dry, arid climates where it doesn't decay, it just sits there.
So the second point is, is that tax going to be reauthorized?
So I'm kind of convinced the tax is worth it. It's a very small tax. We don't really feel, it hits on an awful lot of people in need. We may not be able to cure everybody's mental illness, but we should be able to, I think the technology is there to help them manage it better. That's always, that's always a huge challenge. And it affects people in so many different other areas.